Go ahead and get started. Welcome, everybody, to the Kichai City Council meeting. It is June thirteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Debbie, please call roll.
Call's wired.
Here.
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 All right, we have a comment. If everyone could please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll move on to approving tonight's agenda. Council, any questions about tonight's agenda? I know instead of adjournment on item twelve, we will recess for a workshop. And then we can talk more about the timing of that at the end of the meeting. All right, any other questions or changes, council or staff? No executive session, so we can take off item eleven. Thank you, Todd. Any other questions? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I move with that we accept the agenda as written, except for striking item eleven and changing item twelve to recess.
All right, go ahead, second. I have a motion by Karen, second by Todd. All in favor, say aye.
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 Carrie's five oh. Move on to approving tonight's consent agenda. Council, any questions about tonight's consent agenda? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
Make motion for your consent agenda.
I have a motion by Matt, second by Karen. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Carrie's five oh. Move on to the communications section. Kichai civic groups and committees. Do you have any civic groups or committees who would like to speak?
Uh, yes.
Go ahead.
Um, the Kichai Arts Council is putting on a chalk-it-up. Uh, it's going on right now until June twenty-second, uh, which is the day of the fair. Um, basically just asking any residents to walk their driveways and share a picture with us. And you can also use the, um, Kichai Methodist Church parking lot if you don't have a driveway.
Awesome, perfect. And as a reminder, Kichai Fair is, uh, June twenty-second from eight-thirty to one, right? It's one o'clock? Yeah, one o'clock. So, eight-thirty to one-ish as events end. So, all right. Um, any other Kichai civic groups or committees? Seeing none, we'll move on to Kichai Good News. Council, do you have any Kichai good news?
Um, I do have one thing. I, uh, put a message out on Facebook, um, to invite citizens to join me in the park on Saturday morning at eight o'clock, between eight and nine. You can come and go as you please, but we're gonna do just some light work around the park, um, kind of anticipa- anticipation for the fair. Um, and it will, it's not gonna be anything crazy, but, um, I just wanna invite people to come out, um, give some love back to the park that we all enjoy on a frequent basis.
I do wanna say, Thomas, you, your guys do amazing job before the fair every year, and this is just to enhance it, Lisa.
That's right.
Um, I wanna say that the Kichai Garage Sale was a huge hit this year. Um, the fair captured forty-two, correct me if I'm wrong, forty-two garage sales on our garage sale map this year, which was an increase from the last few da- few years. So, that's awesome. Um, again, I'm going back to Public Works. Uh, Thomas, your guys did an amazing job on the bridge reconstruction. It was a really quick turnaround. I was super impressed, and it looks amazing. So, thank you for that, and tell your guys they did a great job. I think it was just burnt, wasn't it? Because you have multiple guys out there.
I think it burnt there and helped.
Awesome. Well, it looks really good, so. And it held up when we walked across it, so that's even better. So, um, definitely an awesome, uh, turnaround for us. And then the Kichai Farmer's Market, uh, is back up and running for the season. It's on Thursdays from four to six P. M., and it ends in September, so hit it up. Um, any other Kichai good news that I missed?
Yeah, I wouldn't mind sharing something.
Go ahead.
Uh, my son Jake and my daughter Carley would like to give a shout-out to the council members and the city hall members and all, everyone in the community for participating in their fundraiser this year, which is their fourth annual. It started out with a lemonade stand. Uh, and this year, if you take the online donations, the raffle that we held this year, which was, uh, first for us, and we had many participants in that, Kendra and, uh, Matt Jemsby, I wanna give a special shout-out for their help on everything.
Great, you still want me to show you around?
We were able to raise almost nineteen hundred dollars for Wichita.
Wow.
Animal Action League. My wife and I just purchased everything, and, uh, we'll be delivering it next week, so that's a, that's a big milestone for them, and we're hoping next year that it can continue to grow. But, uh, if you don't know what Wichita Animal Action League is, it's, uh, an organization that has a deal with animal shelters and animals that are on the kill shelter. They go in and they assess the animals, and if they have the ability to be rehabilitated, they take them and rehabilitate them and find permanent homes for them. And we found our dogs there four years ago, and that's when the kids wanted to start this fundraiser. And every year it has grown and grown, and now it's almost like we're known as the hot dog place. It's, it's, uh, noteworthy that, uh, we don't charge for anything. It's all donations. So, I think that's pretty strong testimony for all of you and the surrounding communities, and how generous everyone can be when it's a cause that's worthy. So, thank you.
Well, thank you for sharing, and thank you to your kids for all that they've done. That's amazing. Any other good news? I know we got quite a bit today. All right, well, we'll move on from Kichai Good News. Um, we'll move on to public comment.
Debbie? Public comment?
Yes, uh, Joanie here.
Joanie?
Joanie Harris, one oh nine West Chippewa Street, Madam Mayor, members of the council. Thank you for the opportunity to address you this evening through public comment. I appreciate your services to Kichai and the citizens you represent. Tonight, I would like to address communication concerns and the lack of communication happening for the residents of Kichai. There is an ongoing problem that has, this is an ongoing problem that has been brought forth again and again. Tonight, you are considering the NFC Grant Resolution twenty-four dash seven-six-seven for a fitness court at Kichai Park. Why did the city not present to the city council and the public? Why was the city chosen, why has the city chosen to add this to the park, and where would it be located? Why are decisions being made regarding the park, the terrace tear-down, the playground equipment replacement, and now fitness court, when the citizen park board still has not been reactivated, as the mayor shared with us happened fall two thousand and twenty-three, and she stated she would personally oversee the park plans going forward? And the mayor and city administrator indicated they weren't looking into the park board rules and regulations at the January eleventh, twenty-four city council meeting. Five months have now passed, and still no park board. How does this fitness court align with the Kichai Parks Master Plan from two thousand and twenty-one? This is not listed among the priorities given in that plan, only replacing the concrete bases of the existing fitness stations. And at, instead, it has athletic fields and spaces that were designed, baseball fields, pickleball, and basketball courts. This fitness court is designed for adults of all ages and abilities, but there is nothing on the website about children. Yet, my first thought when I saw the court was that children will be all over it. And yet, with the ongoing issue of children playing on the terrace by the city and members of the public, and children are not supposed to be on that, and if I were a child, I would be on the terrace. It's inviting. The likelihood is that children will be playing on the fitness court if installed. Is there public support for the addition to Kichai Park? On April first, two thousand and twenty-four, Kichai and Bel Air established an inter-local agreement, and Kichai residents will enjoy access to the Bel Air Recreation Center at discounted resident rates, extending affordable recreation services to Kichai families. Therefore, is this fitness court necessary? Secondly, there's been no city council workshop regarding an update for the intersection project nor discussion at its council meetings, and no updates for the residents of Kichai who approved the sales tax that enabled this project to move forward. When will the public know the governing body's final decisions about the intersection plan? Will there be streetscaping, benches, artwork? Will the crosswalk, will the southwest Kichai neighborhood get sidewalks on Oliver and Kichai Road? Or will the sidewalk and crosswalk be installed at Lash Lane for potential future not-yet-approved amphitheater and future Kichai City Park? Intersection redesign approval happened four thirteen and twenty-three, and update on one twenty-five, twenty-four P. D. C. final drawings and measurements not completed for the intersection. For twenty-five, twenty-four, council received new conceptual maps. No discussion at that meeting nor since that time, except reports that the project is moving forward, and tonight you decide on sale, consideration, attempt note, resolution twenty-four dash seven-six-six. I've been in contact with city administrator Matt Jemsby regarding the new conceptual maps, and was told, quote, "Please know these renderings are conceptual and subject to change. Finalized versions will be available after contractor has been selected and final engineering has been completed," end of quote. So, when will the discussion with the council occur, and when will the public know what the governing body decides? Construction is expected to begin August two thousand and twenty-four, to stay on schedule. Also, at that one eleven twenty-four meeting, mayor indicated that she desires to start community conversations again, although less often as she is busy with various county committees. No meetings have yet been scheduled this year. Two thousand and twenty-five budget season, what direction has the city council given to the city regarding your priorities for the budget season that is upcoming? And while it is very important that the city council hears what is being presented at meetings, it is also important that residents of Kichai can hear presented information clearly, and I request that microphones be utilized at the podium and the city's talk table. Finally, at that one eleven twenty-four meeting, it was also shared that the city is determining how to best communicate with our community. Surrounding cities regularly utilize our Facebook pages to communicate information with the residents of their cities, but posts are published infrequently on the City of Kichai page. I am very thankful when information is shared there. Hopefully, this can be utilized much more often. Communication is vitally important in our community. Any comments, questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Debbie? All right, Debbie Hart?
Debbie Hart, five thirty-one Prairie Creek Drive. I'm also gonna touch on several different things, and one of them is the proposed workout station. If I hadn't been at the last council meeting, I wouldn't have known anything about it, because there was nothing posted on Facebook or put out there for the community to know. And I think that that is a very big issue. Where is the workout station going to be located? It's gonna be a huge liability for kids, because they are the ones who are gonna be using it as a jungle gym. I do not see this being used by the adult. The workout stations that we currently have aren't used. The only one I ever see being used is the one by Jump Start, and people are sitting on it, drinking or smoking cigarettes. It's not being used for workouts. I don't understand why we would want, in my opinion, this put in our park. And I just, um, and are you gonna ask the community for input, how they feel about this workout station, if they want it? And if we do want it, where will it be put? Or is it just going to be done, and we're stuck with whatever is decided? I do not feel like the park is currently being well cared for, and that is not a reflection on Thomas and his crew, because they are stretched thin. But it has been neglected, because we don't have the park board anymore. I've seen citizens over there taking it on themselves at their own cost, trimming trees, pulling stuff, putting down, um, soil. And that shouldn't be the way that it is. So, the entrance, that terrace, what are the plans for that area? When you tear it down, what is going to be put there? Because that is the entrance to Prairie Creek. And whatever is decided put there, I'd kinda like to know, because that affects me, because I live in that addition. What are you gonna do with the Prairie Creek signs? Are they just, are you gonna put them someplace else so people will know that that's what, that is where the Prairie Creek addition is? Um, what will be done with the rocks? You know, there's, that's a lot of nice rock. I'm not interested in it, but how can the city utilize it instead of just taking it to the dump? What about those nice flat pieces on the top? You guys could make benches out of them. There's gotta be some way to utilize that if you are going to tear that terrace down. And is it possible to get the park sprayed for weeds? The cockleberries are horrendous this year. If I take my dog over there, I have to spend a half hour combing them out of her hair. So, I would like to know if we could get some weed control over there. I feel decisions are being made without community input. The community needs to be aware of what the council is doing. I realize that there are ideas that will never come to fruition, but we are not having workshops to let the community know about the ideas that council is looking into or planning to advance. I do not understand the secretive nature that the council and the mayor has. That's how it appears to me. The less we put out there, the less people have to know about it, and we can move on. And as a community member, I don't appreciate that. I would prefer much more open, some workshops, let the community be happy and involved, let the community have a say. Thank you.
Thank you.
Karen Hobson.
Sure.
Evening, everybody. Sarell Hobson, six twenty-two, Moore Shawnee Circle. Yeah, and I also, um, would like to put my two cents in on the, um, fitness, uh, area. I think that's, um, it's nice that there is a grant, uh, that is going to, to help with that, that, uh, equipment. Um, however, um, the amount that we have to put with it, uh, the hundred sixty-five or whatever it is that we have to put with it, um, in, in my perspective, is not responsible spending, not at the place that we are today. Um, I think that, um, I know that I've talked to many of my neighbors, um, so I am not the, um, what is it, the voice of the few. Um, so, and no one really knew about it. Um, I, I told everybody in my block about it. Um, and they were like, well, I, you know, don't we already have equipment that people can use? Like, well, yeah, but that's all wood, and it's falling apart and everything. And they had the same views as myself. I've never seen, I've been here like almost nine years. I've never seen anybody use it. It was pretty new when, um, or at least it's in a lot better shape when we first got here, uh, than it is right now. Um, so, um, but I've never seen anybody use it. And so, I think if we were going to do something for the park, that of course, the, the kids' equipment would be awesome to be able to do. Also, uh, myself and a lot of people have told me they would prefer pickleball courts than over the, uh, fitness equipment. So, I think that we need to get some, as the others two have said, that we need to get some community involvement. Uh, again, and I'm going to volunteer, if there ever is a park board, I will volunteer to be on the park board. Uh, so, uh, let's get together and have some, uh, voice for the community.
Thank you. And the others? All right. We will close public comment for the evening. Next, we'll move on to old business, roofing quotes. Doing roofing quotes.
Okay, so, um, as I've said before, we had some damage that was identified from hail and things, um, on these two roofs, and when the, uh, inspector came out, or the insurance adjuster came out, they did discover damage on the Public Works roof. Um, we got some quotes. We brought the top three. Um, because several of the quotes did not include everything that was requested from the insurance that would be covered. So, we have the top three presented there. We did receive a check, um, from the insurance company for fifty-five thousand, eight hundred and nineteen dollars and ninety-two cents. Um, their valuation was the ninety-seven thousand, four hundred and thirty-four dollars and seventy-seven cents. We know that there will be, um, additional costs that we will be covered eventually, because as they, uh, did the quotes, it was discovered that are on all three buildings. We are not up to current code with venting requirements, because our insurance does, uh, cover bringing things up to code. That will be covered, so there will be additional, um, additional funding turned in. Uh, we will have to keep that separate, so we know what was the original quote, what was to bring it up to code. And we do expect to get a, more on that settlement. The difference between the quotes and the settlement, um, the lowest quote, it would be the thirty-eight thousand, five hundred and fourteen dollars and forty-two cents. That was not budgeted, however, because we do have, uh, fund balance, and we always build in a contingency for such things, so that we do have that to cover. That's where those funds would come from, this general fund balance. I would recommend that we accept the quote from Farhoff, and authorize us to sign the agreement.
All right, so, council, any questions? I'm hearing none. I would entertain a motion unless somebody asks a question.
When's the projected timeline to get the work done? When's the projected timeline to start the work?
So, she's been working with contractors.
So, the, we would expect to be able to start in four to six weeks, depending on the availability of product and what their schedule is. Um, right now, the biggest problem has now become temperature, because it is not recommended to be up on a roof after it's, say, over eighty-five degrees. And I don't think I said this, but to say this real quick, above eighty-five degrees. So, we will work with the contractors to see where they are right now. Um, but we will be several weeks out.
Any other questions? If not, I would entertain a motion.
I move we accept the quote from Farhoff for the roof repairs and authorize the staff to sign. Second?
I have a motion by Todd, second by Matt. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Carrie's five oh. Move on to new business. NFC Grant Resolution twenty-four dash seven-sixty-seven.
Thank you, mayor. Mayor and council, uh, oh, a month or so ago, Ashley brought to me the opportunity to apply for this grant. Uh, she was contacted by, uh, the NFC and Blue Cross Blue Shield. We had a meeting with them, um, talked to them about this fitness court, um, and went through the grant process. Uh, we were awarded the grant. The grant is between, they award between thirty-five thousand and fifty thousand. Uh, we were awarded fifty thousand dollars for this grant, and it is a matching grant. Um, the total cost of the fitness court is a hundred and ten thousand dollars for the court itself. There's two different versions. Uh, ours is the lesser version without what they call the studio attached to it. Um, so, it is a, it is a matching grant. Uh, the good thing about this grant is it's a non-binding, uh, grant. So, our, our desire for this is to apply for additional grants. NFC helps us apply for those grants, to find the additional funding for it, uh, possibly use co-corporate donors, uh, that will fund this, uh, as well. Uh, if we need to use or designate local funds, we can do that. I think that would work well, but our, our hope is that it will be fully funded through, uh, paper and. We know that we currently have, like you pointed out, fitness stations throughout the park. Those simply are not utilized, because they're antiquated, they're made of wood, they're falling apart, they splinter, um, and different things like that, but, um. Dustin is here. Dustin, you wanna pop the?
Yep.
Video up?
It's a video?
Not video, just the. Oh, there's a. So, these fitness courts, there are, uh, between four and five that are awarded throughout the state. We will be the second one in the state, um, to have one of these fitness courts. It's a very modern concept, uh, for fitness. The whole drive behind this is to provide for an active fit community. Um, it's supposed to be, uh, available to all age groups. Um, and you will see the, the concept here in just a second. So, this is the fitness court itself, all body weight type, uh, exercises. They have the NFC through Blue Cross Blue Shield. They have fitness coaches in the area that they train. They come out and they put on classes, uh, for the community on these fitness courts, so it's an organized-type thing. There's, uh, apps that people can track their fitness on, their phones, and just provides a local resource for, uh, people to be active and fit within our community. The, I've talked to P. E. C. about fitting this into our current park plan. Um, so, they are working to provide us a concept where this would fit into our, our current park plan. The good thing about that park plan is it's a working document. Um, it's a living document, so we can make adjustments to it as we go. Of course, when it was started, we didn't know that this was available. Um, came about, we applied for it, and now we have the opportunity to have one. If it doesn't work out, we're not bound, uh, to, to put it in. So, the resolution you're looking at tonight is just kinda, um, memorializes the city's acceptance of the grant, um, to promote and implement fitness to the public, uh, the outdoor fitness court, and that we will look and, and try to find and secure additional funding to meet the matching portion of that.
Will you go back one slide? Dustin? So, the thing that I really, really like about this is the fact that they told us we could look for local artists to help us design the look of it. And I think that's really, really awesome, and it's how unique is that, that we wanna bring it in, and since we're an arts and fitness district, having that as something that we can advertise to say, hey, come out and help us, you know, put this in our park and make it look the way we want it.
That was one of the things that was attractive to them is, you know, we are a, an art-based community, and artwork on these is very big, uh, to fit in with the community and the surroundings, so that was a very attractive part of it.
Did I understand that there would not be studio, um, side of it? Something flip back, uh?
Right, so, yeah, so you have the fitness court on the front, and then there's the option of having a fitness studio on the back, which is that additional workout area for, you know, group-type classes. We just didn't feel we had the room over there to do that, so chose to go just with the fitness portion of it and not the, what they call the studio.
I just have a couple of questions, if I may.
Sure.
Uh, and I, it's mainly a hearing check. I wanted to make sure that, uh, I heard you correctly, that e- even if we do approve this grant, there's no obligation to continue.
Correct.
That's right. Yeah.
Um, and we would have, i- in, from a conceptual stage that it is in right now, we would have, uh, final plans that we could engage the public with and, and have a discourse to determine whether or not we wanna move forward with it.
Yes, and in fact, part of this, the, once we find the funding for it and secure the funding for all of it, the community, the community outreach is a huge part of this. They bring people in, uh, they advertise for it. They have onsite activities. It's a big press-type deal, so.
Okay, excellent. That's, that was my big thing, and then I've got another, uh, follow-up to that. You mentioned that, uh, it could be guided classes, and I'm wondering if there's any additional expense involved with the guided classes, or is this just part of what they do? And how does that work exactly?
Yeah, it's my understanding that they have fitness coaches in the area that they certify. They have one of these in Wichita, uh, one of these parks, so these fitness coaches can, I don't know who funds them.
I believe it's through Blue Cross Blue Shield.
Yeah.
They fund it.
But they organize these events, um, not as part of the city, but they just organize them at these different fitness studios to get the community involved.
Okay, and that would be something that would be announced to the community so they could attend if they wanted to?
Yep.
Uh, is this something that's a regular thing, an ongoing thing, or is this just a sporadic?
Well, you know, I would, I would think it has a lot to do with community support, you know, and how many people, how many people it draws in, yeah.
Sure, okay.
But it's our understanding, Ashley and I, from meeting with them, that when they put these in, it draws a lot of people in.
And then my, my final. Sorry, I'm trying to get it out over here. My final question really has to do with, uh, do we have a location in mind?
Yep, the city, the city park was the designated area. So, there's certain space requirements. It can't be so close to like a playground or like our shelter, so there's, there's required, they have requirements. Um, they said a lot of time these fitness studios are put in within visual eyesight of the playgrounds. So, when parents bring their kids to the park, the parents have a place to work out, and they can still have line of sight to their kids that are on the playground. Of course, we have toddler.
Are we considering the open space? Yeah, I guess it would be south of the shelter that.
Yeah, south there between the shelter and the playground.
Okay.
Yeah, those areas. So, EC is working, they have the dimensions from the NFC and they will incorporate those into our park plan so we can find the right spot for it.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Again, it's not finalized of where it's going to go, so it still could move. It still could be in a different spot, so we're not.
Yep.
Acting. Kendra?
If we accept, is there a time limit on this grant, like that we would have to move forward?
Yeah, so it would have to. I'm sorry, didn't bring that with me. It would be, I believe, mid-two thousand twenty-five that it would have to be installed. Yeah, yeah.
And then, if we move forward, who's responsible for making any kind of repairs if, if that was needed?
Yeah, I don't, that's a good question. I'll have to ask that. It's a good question. Yeah. It was presented to us as very low maintenance.
Sure.
I don't know that there would be any repairs.
So, I have a question. I think that someone in the public asked about or commented it was not appropriate for all ages or children. Is that correct or is it?
Well, I would say not infants, but, you know, yeah.
I understand it was for all ages.
A wide range, yes.
So, that's a clear point of clarification.
I think it's probably just as you can do the exercises.
Right. Well, yeah.
Yeah. Any other questions, council?
Just to make a note, I do have a sheet in front of me. It says, planning and design completed by February twenty-five.
Yes.
This whole week.
But installation would be mid-two thousand twenty-five.
Yeah, March two thousand twenty-five.
Any other questions or comments? I'm seeing none. I would entertain a motion or whatever you guys would like to do with this resolution.
I move we adopt resolution twenty-four seven sixty-seven and authorize the mayor to sign.
One second.
Which one do you want? Okay. I have a motion by Karen, second by Matt. All in favor say aye.
Aye. Aye.
Carries five oh. Move on to the bond sale consideration of temp notes, resolution twenty-four dash seven sixty-six.
Mayor and Council, I'm going to turn this over to our city attorney and Clayton Kelly, who is our financial planner, and let you guess.
Awesome. Who wants to start? Welcome, Clayton.
Thanks. Clayton Kelly with Piper Sandler, financial advisor for the city. So, this morning, we accepted bids on the temporary note issuance. As a reminder, this was helped to issue the Keachai Road Oliver project, helping be paid back through some, a portion of it through sales tax. And the thought process behind going with temporary note financing before permanent financing was essentially to get the project started sooner as well as any excess sales tax may be used to downsize the eventual permanent financing rather than upfront permanent financing the entire amount. And then having to wait several years before you're able to downsize if you have excess funds. So, this morning at, at ten o'clock, we put this out for bid and received three bids. As a result, the winning bidder was from Robert Baird at a four point three five percent a couple of months ago. And we started looking at preliminary rates on this. I think we were right around that five percent rate. So, really over the last couple of months, rates have improved quite a bit, especially this week. We just looked from the start of this week to where we're at today. There was a Federal Reserve meeting on Wednesday that the markets pretty much stabilized. It seemed like after that conversation. So, this morning was a really good time. We had a pretty big rally in the bond market to accept a bid. And you can, you can get an idea based on these three bids, kind of where the current market, where they think short-term rates are at. I mean, you're almost half a percent difference between that winning bid and that third bid. So, really interesting environment right now with interest rates, especially on the short end where you have higher short-term rates compared to shorter, lower, longer term rates. So, just an interesting dynamic. But with that, there's a resolution tonight that essentially allows you to accept the winning bid from Robert Baird and move forward with the temp note resolution, which will allow funding for these projects on July tenth.
So, was it fairly unusual for us to get three bids or do we usually get them?
Yeah, I mean, honestly, typically we see one to two on this size of a project. So, definitely an improvement from that. And I think a lot of that just has to do with the timing of this sale lined up really well with, we have one side of the picture in the state of Kansas. Issuance volume levels are pretty low, so there's a very high demand right now for tax exempt bond issues or temporary note issuances. So, that's another factor. But, yeah, very, very good result to see three bids here. It gives you a good competitive idea of kind of where different banks fall in line, where they think rates should be for this type of financing.
Awesome. Well, thank you. Any other questions, council? Seeing none.
I think the four point three five is a good rate.
Yeah. I was impressed.
Clayton, you could explain to me that with that lower rate, in the end, it will save the city money on interest payments. Could you speak to that a little bit?
Yeah, so, so kind of compared to where we were looking at even just in April, I think where that rate came in at a four point three five versus that five percent is projecting, it's about twenty thousand dollars less overall over the next three years via for this three-year temporary additions. So, just where those rates came in versus what we were projecting is quite a significant difference from an interest, overall interest cost perspective. And as a reminder, just at, as we call it in some ways, a construction financing where you have three years. After one year from now, you have the ability to either pay this off entirely at no penalty or roll into a, a longer term financing. So, it provides a lot of flexibility for you guys to sit in terms of timing over these next three years, how you want to go about that.
Thank you for this clarification.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Council, any questions, comments? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Before you do that, Matt.
Oh, sorry.
So, I'll just, I'll just point out, so Clayton and Piper Sandler. Sorry. Used to be called something slightly different. Ran the bond sale this morning and did an excellent job. And as you just pointed out, we had a great result. They sent the results over to our firm in late morning and we took those and entered the lowest bid information and prepared the note resolution that you have on your agenda. So, that resolution sets out all the terms of these temporary notes that you're considering issuing. So, the two things that, that we need to have accomplished is first, if we get a motion to accept the low bid from Robert W. Baird, and then if you've done that, then a motion to consider the note resolution. The only other thing I'll point out is, is if we move forward after this, closing is scheduled for July tenth, in which case there will be a project fund and we'll start moving on. I suppose Theresa can update if any rate of funds are expected to come in, but we'll start moving in earnest on the project and getting that, getting that moved forward. Any other questions that might happen? I'd be happy to answer them on topic, Clayton.
All right. Any questions, council? So, we will, if you decide to move forward on those, need two motions. If not, just one. So.
I'm just curious if there's been consideration to the financial impact to the community on accepting this.
Yeah.
So, and I'll let, if Theresa has input on that, she certainly can. I, I think the, the intent has always been that this project be funded from the, the sales tax. And there's been a lot of analysis done that the, the interest on these temporary notes and the principal and, and if that gets wrapped into a permanent financing. So, if two years from now, the project is done and you, you issue a bond to permanently finance that, that the, the expected revenue stream from the sales tax will cover those payments to retire that.
Thank you.
Any other question? I would entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept a low bid from Robert Baird and Company of four point three five percent.
Second?
I have a motion by Matt, second by Todd. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Carries five oh. I would entertain a second motion.
I move we approve resolution twenty-four dash seventy-six six and authorize the mayor to sign.
Second?
I have a motion by Todd, second by Kendra. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Carries five oh. Thank you very much. Thank you, Clayton. Move on. I call, I call agenda item C eight, C, sorry, I have to leave this long script, guys, so it's going to be a long night. A consideration of case number CU two thousand twenty-four oh four, oh, request to allow an eight-foot-tall privacy fence on the property in R-one single-family residential district, zoning district. Before we proceed, would any member of city council wish to abstain from voting on this agenda item due to conflict of interest bias or any other reason? Seeing no, let the record show that there are no extensions and that a form of five council members is present. As a reminder, a valid protest accounts for petitions from the owners of twenty percent or more of the property being rezoned or twenty percent of the more, twenty percent or more of the property within the official notification area. Has the city clerk determined a valid protest for this case? All right. Council members should report the general nature of any verbal or written ex parte communication received prior to this meeting. However, it is not necessary to disclose names of the parties. Does any council members wish to report ex parte communications? Let the record show that no ex parte communications have, have been reported. The Planning Commission held the public hearing for this case on five fourteen, two thousand twenty-four. Have the council, has the council received a summary of the public hearing found in the unapproved meeting minutes? Does the council, does the council and everyone present on the case believe the public hearing was fair and impartial?
Yes.
This is a new part, sorry. I will now, I will now call on zoning administrator Dustin Belton to present the case report, the background information, and the planning commission's recommendation.
Thank you. CU two thousand twenty-four dash zero four, Lee Boyer and Karen Anderson. The applicants are requesting a conditional use to allow an eight-foot privacy fence on property generally located eight hundred twenty-six feet east of Bolivar on Keachai Road or three hundred East Keachai Road. The unplatted site developed, the unplatted site is developed with a single-family residence and accessory structures and is zoned R-one single-family residential district. As shown in the applicant's approved, excuse me, applicant's provided site plan, the proposed fence will be six foot tall for approximately two hundred feet and then will be eight foot tall for the remaining one hundred thirty feet. Keachai zoning regulations state closed fences, walls, privacy, masonry, less than seventy-five percent open space on vertical face are allowed up to six feet in height in rear and side yards of lots with single-family residential uses. Over six feet in height allowed only by conditional use. Per these regulations, the applicants would not be able to construct the proposed eight-foot-tall portion of the fence. Approval of this request would allow the applicants the fence as proposed. Case history, the subject site is unplatted. There have been no zoning actions on this property. Adjacent zoning and land use. To the north is R-one developed to single-family residential. South, C-one Arts and Business District. East, C-one Arts and Business District. West, R-one Single Family Residential. Public services, Keachai Road is a paved local road and all public services are available to the provided, and provided to the property. The requested conditional use is in conformance with Keachai's two thousand forty comprehensive plan. Allowing a taller fence for this residence is appropriate due to the context of the surrounding area and adjacent development. An eight-foot fence screening the residential property from abutting moderate intensity commercial uses will reduce land use incompatible buildings. Based upon information available prior to the public hearings, planning staff recommends that the request be approved following the, subject to the following conditions. The applicant and/or contractor shall provide engineered design plans. The fence shall meet applicable provisions of the building code with regard to design, construction materials, and methods and foundations. If the zoning administrator finds that there is a violation of any of the conditions of the conditional use, the zoning administrator, in addition to enforcing the other remedies set forth in the zoning regulations, may declare that the conditional use is null and void. Recommendation is based upon the following findings. Properties to the south and east are zoned and developed as C-one Arts and Business District. Properties to the north and west are zoned and developed as R-one Single Family Residential District. The request of a conditional use is in conformance with Keachai's two thousand forty comprehensive plan as discussed in the staff report. All utilities and public services are provided to the area. Staff do not see an increase in public utilities or services. The subject site is currently zoned R-one Single Family Residential District, which permits a privacy fence over six feet by conditional use approval. The property is not vacant. It was developed with a single-family residence in nineteen ninety-five. Staff does not see an issue with R-one Single Family Residential District being adjacent to other R-one Single Family Residential District and C-one Arts and Business District and having a privacy fence over six feet in height. Staff does not anticipate that approval of the request will have significant negative impacts on the surrounding properties. Approval of this application is not anticipated to have significant detrimental impacts to the public health, safety, or welfare. Denial of this application could represent a loss in the use and enjoyment of the applicant's property. No input, positive or negative, has been received from the public at the time of staff report. This is the area. Site photo here. Zoning map showing the surrounding properties. Two thousand forty comprehensive plan showing it's good for housing and the site plan, eight foot and then six feet just along that southern property line. Site photos, they're here, they're no longer missing. To the north, east, south of the property, we have the old-school tap house and west of the subject property. Does council have any questions or anything for me?
Took my next one.
I, I like that.
I appreciate it. Does council have any questions for the zoning administrator? Thank you very much. Does the applicant wish to present any new information to the council for consideration? Welcome, Karen.
Thank you.
It'll make you go crazy.
Good evening. I'm Karen Anderson. I'm here with Lee Boyer. We live at three hundred East Keachai Road, which is north of the Tap House Bar. Three years ago, when the bar opened, the council denied our request for an eight-foot fence on their property at their expense. The council did mandate that the bar put in screening. As of today, the almost two-foot-high planted screenings that might still be alive have had no impact on the issues of trash, auto headlights, noise, and trespassers that we deal with on a regular basis in our backyard. The impact this bar has had on our property is quite devastating. Two prospective buyers backed out of purchasing our property, learning that there was a bar next door. The mistakes that were made, the special treatment, and the considerations that were bestowed upon the bar have been a very hard pill to swallow and have probably not affected any other residential property like it has ours. We are asking for an eight-foot fence on our property at our expense to help with these issues that I've mentioned. An eight-foot fence will help as the geographical elevation changes at the property line are significant. The most concerning issue that this fence will address is the trespassers. We have had children, while their parents are drinking at the bar, come onto our property. Our liability for a child getting hurt or drowning in our pond. Our liability for a child getting hurt or drowning in our pond is of the most highest concern. The noise from the bar trash being dumped at 1:45 a.m. every Tuesday morning, along with the musicians that the bar have almost every weekend, is extremely overwhelming. The vulgarity of the lyrics of some of the songs are so disturbing that it should not be broadcast in any direction from any PA system. Speaking to Chief Moore, we learned that the DVD meters that were to be purchased three years ago were never purchased. I have called 911 on the noise. We have watched bar patrons come onto our property to urinate, as if no one sees them. The family-oriented business that was presented to go in three years ago is far from the reality that goes on. Please vote in favor for our request for this eight-foot fence on our property at our expense. I have pictures of the inadequate planted screenings and of a trespasser if you're interested. Thank you.
Thank you. Council any questions for the applicant? Thank you, Karen. Does anyone in the audience wish to respond to the applicant or provide any new information that was not made available during the official public hearing? Seeing none, we'll close the public input. Council, we will go through the recommendations again, like we always do, and if you'll either nod, give me a yes, I would prefer a verbal yes, that helps me know if you've answered, that would be great, and we will go through all of the recommendations. The zoning use in character of the neighborhood. Consistency with the comprehension plan vision in character of the city of Kichai. Yes. The public utilities, roadways, and other public service relative to the anticipated impacts of the proposed use. The suitability of the subject property for the use to which it has been restricted. Length of time property has remained vacant or zoned. Compalatability of the proposed district classification with nearby property. Extent to which removal of the restriction will detrimentally affect nearby property. Proportionality of losses/impact to the individual property owner in the immediate vacancy relative to the net public gain of the community at large.
Yes.
And public input. Public input. All right. Assuming all necessary information has been received, council has three options. Adopt the Planning Commission's recommendation of approval, override the Planning Commission's recommendation of approval with a two-thirds majority vote of the governing property membership, which is four votes, return the case to the Planning Commission for further consideration, along with a statement reporting the basis of our failure to approve or deny. Does council have any further questions? I would entertain a motion.
I move that we approve case number CU-2024-04 as stated.
I'll second it.
A motion to approve the Planning Commission's recommendation has been made by council member Eiderstein and signed by council member Dwyer. Is there any final discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Thank you, Karen. I call agenda item 8C, yes, 8D actually. 8D, a consideration for case number CU-2024-05, a request to allow an oversized detached garage on the property in R1 Single Family Residential District, zoning district. Before we proceed, would any member of City Council wish to abstain from voting on this agenda item due to conflict of interest, bias, or any other reason? Let the record show that there is no abstentions and that a quorum of five council members is present. As a reminder, a valid protest accounts for petitions from owners of 20% or more of the property being rezoned, or 20% or more of the property within the official notification area. Has the city clerk determined a valid protest in this case? Council members should report the general nature of any verbal or written ex parte communications received prior to the meeting. However, it is not necessary to disclose the names of the parties. Does any member of the council wish to report ex parte communications? Let the record show that no ex parte communication has been reported. Planning Commission held a public hearing for the case on 5/14/2024. Has the council received a summary of the public hearing found in the approved minutes?
Yes.
I'm sorry, it was unapproved meeting minutes. I apologize.
Yes.
Want to make sure that was clear. Does the council and everyone present on the case believe the public hearing was fair and impartial?
Yes.
Yes.
I will now call on zoning administrator Dustin Belton again to present the case report, background information, and the Planning Commission's recommendation.
Thank you. CU-2024-05, Wendy Lomaster and Deb Moore. The applicants are requesting a conditional use to construct a detached garage within the awning that exceeds maximum gross floor area, 960 square feet for properties over 10,000 square feet, but not more than three acres. The property is generally located west of Oliver and north of Kichai Road or 322 West Chippewa Street, and is zoned R1 Single Family Residential District. The property is platted as Lot 21, Block 2, North Meadows Fourth Edition, and developed with a single-family residence. The garage is intended to be used for vehicle storage. Detached residential carports or garage is defined in the Kichai zoning regulations as a structure considered either a carport or garage as defined in Section 3.03 that is unattached to a principal residential structure. Kichai zoning regulations, Section 3.03 defines a garage as a covered and enclosed accessory structure that provides direct access to a driveway or parking space, which is intended solely for storage of motor vehicles owned by residents of the primary structure. A garage may be attached to or detached from a primary residential structure. The applicants are claiming on the garage to be 30 by 50 feet or 1,500 square feet, which is 540 square feet over the maximum permitted by Section 10.31 of the zoning regulations. Kichai zoning regulations state, except as approved by conditional use, maximum gross floor area shall be as follows. Lots over 10,000 square feet in area, but not more than three acres. Garages, 960 square feet. Carports, 600 square feet. Approval of this request would allow the applicants to construct the garage as proposed. The subject site was platted as Lot 21, Block 2 of North Meadows Fourth Edition in 1991. There have been no zoning actions on this property. Adjacent zoning and land use, northeast, south, and west are zoned as R1 Single Family Residential District and developed. Chippewa Street is a paved local road and all public services are provided, are available and provided to the property. The requested conditional use is in conformance with Kichai's 2040 comprehensive plan. Context-sensitive development helps preserve and enhance both the function and aesthetics of adjacent features. See recommendation number two below. This recommendation is based upon the following. The applicant, or excuse me, based upon available prior to the public hearing, planning staff recommends that the request be approved, subject to the following conditions. The applicant and/or contractor shall submit a building permit and provide engineered design plans. The detached residential carport or garage must comply with the specific use standards of Section 10.31. The driveway of the detached residential carport or garage shall be graded for appropriate drainage and surface with asphalt, concrete, comparable hard pavement, or constructed and maintained with a dust-free gravel aggregate or other rock surface. The zoning administrator finds that there is a violation of any of the conditions of the conditional use, the zoning administrator, in addition to enforcing the other requirements set forth in the zoning regulations, may declare that the conditional use is null and void. This recommendation is based on the following findings. The properties to the north, east, south, and west are zoned and developed as R1 Single Family Residential District. Two, the request for a conditional use is in conformance with Kichai's 2040 comprehensive plan as discussed in the staff report. Three, all utilities and public services are provided to the area. Staff do not anticipate an increase in public utilities or services due to the proposed garage. Four, the subject site is currently zoned R1 Single Family Residential District, which permits a detached garage that exceeds the maximum gross floor area by conditional use approval. The property is approximately 47,212 square feet and has a maximum lot coverage of 35% or 16,525 square feet. The primary residents and other small sheds on the property have a lot coverage of about 5.3%. The addition of a detached garage or carport or garage would make the total lot coverage about 8.5%. The property is not vacant, it was developed with single-family residence in 1992. Staff does not see an issue with the R1, with R1 Single Family Residential District with an oversized garage being adjacent to other R1 Single Family Residential District properties. Staff does not anticipate that approval of the request will have significant negative impacts on the surrounding properties. Approval of this application is not anticipated to have significant detrimental impacts to the public health, safety, or welfare. Denial of this application could represent a loss in the use and enjoyment of the applicant's property. No input, positive or negative, has been received from the public at the time of staff report. Here we have an aerial map of the property. Here's the zoning map, all R1 in this area here. Kichai's 2040 comprehensive plan map shows an area good for housing. Site plan. The applicants are claiming on having it on the north side of the property and the west side, outside of the easement over here. And adjacent, they're probably going to take down their fence that is right here to the garage itself. Here's the site triangle. For terms, the proposed garage up here will not interfere with traffic being obstructed, being unable to see during the term. Site photos, north of the subject property, east, south, and west. Does council have any questions?
Does council have any questions for you? Since he takes my role. I am hearing none, thank you Dustin. Does the applicant wish to present any new information for the council's consideration? Seeing shaky head and a no from you, thank you very much. Does the council have any questions for the applicant? I'm assuming you want it, so, I mean. All right. Does anyone, oh, I'm sorry, did anybody have questions? Does anyone in the audience wish to respond to the applicant or provide any new information that has not been made available during the official public hearing? Seeing none. All right, council, here we go again. Recommendations. The zoning use in the character of the neighborhood.
Yes.
Consistency with the comprehension, comprehensive plan vision in the character of the city of Kichai.
Yes.
Adequacy of public utilities, roadways, and other public service relative to the anticipated impacts of the proposed use.
Yes.
The suitability of the subject property for the use to which it has been restricted. The length of time property has remained vacant as zoned. Yes. Compatibility of the proposed district classification with nearby properties.
Yes.
Intent to which removal of the restrictions will detrimentally affect nearby property.
Yes.
Proportionality of the losses/impacts to individual property owners in the immediate vicinity relative to the net public gain for the community at large.
Yes.
Yes.
Public input. All right. Assuming all necessary information has been received, council has three options. Adopt the Planning Commission's recommendation of approval, override the Planning Commission's recommendation of approval with a two-thirds majority vote of the governing body membership, which is four votes, return the case to the Planning Commission for further consideration, along with a statement reporting the basis of our failure to approve or deny. Does council have any further questions or discussion? Seeing none, I would entertain a motion.
I move we approve case number CU-2024-05 and adopt ordinance 1829-24 and authorize the mayor to sign.
Is there any final discussion? Seeing none? All in favor of the motion, say aye.
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 Carries 5-0. Kendra did. And I just realized that on the last one, so we'll have to go back. Not be, I messed up, I didn't read the "improved" the case number part, so we'll have to go back. Do I need to, I can read that after this, I just wanted to make sure I clarified that I needed to do that. Case number CU-2024-05 is approved. Approval will become effective on the date ordinance number 1829-24 is published in the Arc Valley News. So I'm going to go back and read the other one, just so we have it on record that I read. Case number CU-2024-04 is approved. The approval will become effective on the date ordinance number 1828-24 is published in the Arc Valley News. Now we're good on all accounts. All right, we will move on to the public hearing for deannexation, resolution 24-76-3.
Thank you, Mayor and council. On April 25th of this year, you passed a resolution that called for a public hearing to be held today in reference to the deannexation of the road right-of-bays on 53rd Street between Oliver and Woodlawn. That was part of the agreement we came to with Bel Air to deannex those portions of the roadway, so they would be responsible for the reconstruction of 53rd Street. This resolution for a public hearing, tonight, Mayor, you will need to open the public hearing for deannexation of the street right-of-way of 53rd Street North for any public comments. If there are public comments, hear those comments. After that, if there are none, either way, then you close the hearing and you move on to the court.
All right, thank you very much. I open the public hearing for the deannexation of 53rd Street road, right, is it right-of-bays or roadways? Sorry.
Road, right-of.
Right-of. Seeing none, I will close the public hearing. I will move on to the deannexation ordinance.
So our next item, the deannexation ordinance, is the final step in this process that deannexes those right-of-bays on 53rd Street, those go to the city of Bel Air, so they can finish the construction of that roadway, and we are not responsible for that.
Any questions, council? I know this has been a long time coming and definitely.
Many years in the making.
Yes.
And a good resolution.
And I do attest that to the fact that you have a good working relationship with Bel Air and that we are moving in a good movement forward to work together as a city.
We do, we're accomplishing a lot of good things with that.
Thank you very much. Council, any questions? If not, I would entertain a motion. So he'll second it, but do I have a?
I move we approve ordinance 1830-
I move we approve ordinance 1830-24 and approve the board of mayor to sign.
I'll second that.
Thank you. I have a motion by Todd, second by Paul. All in favor, say aye. All right, carries five oh. Move on to counsel reports. Counsel, do you have any reports?
I do. You know I do. So the first, I said the first meeting. I've gone to lots of meetings. But the first meeting I'll note on was a meeting called COPE. It's called the Cost of Poverty Experience, and I attended that on 6/11. I attended an interactive training that was a simulation about living in poverty. This interactive simulation puts you into the families that they've interviewed. They interviewed 15 families who have experienced extreme poverty, and you live in a lump of their world. This is a very eye-opening experience about how families have to try to overcome some of the hardest situations just to maintain their basic necessities. I would highly encourage anyone to take this training. I work with families like this every day, and you truly never understand what they're going through until you live a day in their life. This is a good introduction to recognizing and understanding the problems of our society and what they face. And this is put on by the AHAH project and also Care Portal. And Care Portal gives family, they work with churches, to provide basic necessities for families in need. So I would highly suggest you look into it because churches and individuals can get involved by either donating material items, their time, their service to families who are in some of the hardest situations they've ever had to be in. And sometimes one decision can change an outcome for a family where, say, a kid's about to come into foster care. Getting a car taken care of, putting a new belt on a car can be the difference between those kids going to foster care and having trauma and them getting to stay with their birth family. So I highly encourage that. The Wichita Chamber of Commerce also held a poverty reduction training, and that was on 6/12/24. I attended the poverty reduction training. This training was to help understand how communities can, could start to come together to help reduce poverty. They mentioned a poverty reduction plan that the Health Department can be really involved in. This work is coming out of the Bridges ICT work out of Wichita, which is housed out of an organization called HopeNet. They are working to reduce poverty in 10 zip codes in Wichita over the next 10 years. So I suggest you look them up as well. Matt and I attended REEP today. REEP focused on transportation at this meeting. Today, they gave brief updates about transportation organizations that are players throughout Sutter County. These included K254, the Turnpike, K96, and many others. I am also working with REEP to help put on a summer legislative tour series, which will happen on July 16th with the DCF Data Walk Spotlight on Foster Care, which represented Leah Howell is the driving force. And this event is a sponsored REEP event for all members, and that'll be at KLC, the Kansas Leadership Center. And that will be open to all elected officials and REEP members. And that's all I have. I know I take forever on these things. All right. Any other council updates? Seeing none, I will move on to...
Thank you, Mayor. Counsel, we don't have staff reports tonight. I know there were some comments from audience members about the park board, and it was kind of timely to some conversations that I've had with other people, specifically the mayor. Over the last couple of weeks, we understand that we do need to look at getting the park board working again. One concern that we do have is getting volunteers for it. I know several of us have asked around and volunteers are hard to come by, most recently with the fair board. We tried like crazy to find people to fill that fair board and finally did, but it was, it was kind of tough. Our current park board or ordinance says we will have eight members to our park board, which is unusually large compared to some of our other cities. So I think it would probably be good to look at maybe amending that ordinance to require less people to be on the park board, to make it a little more reasonable and assist us in finding those people. I think it's very important to note that we, this is an important topic to us, the parks, and it is important to note that we are, we are right in the middle of budget season. There are a lot of moving pieces going on in the city, a lot of good things happening, and we have to take them one, one step at a time. And I think the budget takes precedence right now. And we will look at the park board after the budget process. But I think it's vitally important that we get through this budget process, have a good budget that we can present to the council, and move forward from there. I would like to thank all of our staff, especially this week, Public Works. I know we're always saying Public Works, Public Works, but man, those guys are out there doing a lot of things. They're the ones that we see in the community. It has been so hot this week. When I was leaving this afternoon to go grab something to eat before the meeting, Thomas walked in and he looked like he was going to fall over because he was so hot. Said he was going to go home and change, and I'm glad he did because I didn't want to stand in his office too long. I've been working outside all day. So Thomas, thank you to you and your guys, the police officers. This hot weather affects them too. Boy, they're suited up there in all that body armor, dressed in black and standing out in the sun for just a couple of minutes for them to heat up really quick. So we're kind of spoiled being in the office here. We can work in the air conditioning, but there's no grass growing under anybody's feet in here either. Like I said, a lot of moving pieces, working vigorously on the budget and all the other things that are, that are going on. So we have a wonderful staff. I thank them all. And I know council sees all the hard work that they do every day.
I also want to give a shout out to the Kichai police again. You guys did an amazing job hosting the movies and the park. I heard great things. Thank you for continuing to do that. And thank you for also sponsoring the Kichai Fishing Derby that will happen at the fair. All your hard work on that will be greatly appreciated by the community.
It'll be a great time. We're actually, real quick, we're going to move the, moving the park from the final Friday this week to the July 5th, just to kind of keep it in line with the July, Fourth of July celebration. And, and I think it'll allow a lot more people to attend and be a good time. So we'll put it out one more week, July 5th. Hopefully no rain.
You wouldn't make it on my honeymoon gift.
Hey, I'm celebrating. I'll cook dinner.
I'll be in Colorado.
I can't help that.
Well, I guess this will technically be my last council meeting as mayor of Alaska. I will be Mayor Coleman, most likely unless Andrew tells me otherwise, that I can't change my name. I will be Mayor Coleman as of the 30th of this month. So just so you all know, I did not leave. It is not a new person. It is me. All right. Counsel, I would entertain a motion to... Oh, yes, go ahead.
We will have a motion to recess. We just, this week, set a budget workshop for June 18th. So that is what this will be for next Tuesday at 6:00 p.m. I believe we have court in this room, so we will be meeting in the auxiliary room over there, but we will have the workshop starting at 6 o'clock.
All right. Counsel, I would entertain a motion to recess until June 18th. At 6:00 p.m. Okay, Kendra, first. I have a motion by Kendra, second by Karen. All in favor, say aye. We are recessed. Thanks.